The time is now 7:19 and I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Town of Hingham Select Board on November 4th, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording? Seeing none, we go to the first item on our agenda, which is a discussion and possible vote to approve the filed disclosure by special municipal employee of a financial interest in a municipal contract under Mass General Laws, Chapter 286A, Section 20D for the purchase by the school department of a school bus from Fleet First Incorporated. Just by way of background, Chapter 286A is the state's conflict of interest law. It applies to city and town officials and employees, including unpaid members of local boards and commissions. The purpose of the conflict of interest law is to ensure that the private financial interests and personal relationships of public employees and volunteers do not conflict with their public obligations. The law is broadly written to prevent a public employee from becoming involved in a situation which could result in a conflict or give the appearance of a conflict. Section 20D of that law provides an exemption from the conflict of interest law to a special municipal employee who files with the town clerk a statement making full disclosure of her interests and the interests of her immediate family in the contract. But the exemption is only effective if the select board approves the exemption. So with that background, we have a proposed exemption for us to consider. I think the best way, we have the person, the special municipal employee here, Ness Corenti, and Ness, if you could unmute yourself and just explain the contract that is at issue here.
Hi, everyone. Sorry for the small screen here. I am the owner, co-owner of transportation company called Fleet First and we sell buses, used buses. And we are in the process of talking to John Ferris, who's the business manager of the school department, to sell one of those buses. John had gone through the process to try to find something somewhere else and he couldn't, so we had started talking from our perspective to try to sell him one of our buses.
And the financial interest that you and your family have, I believe it's you and your husband are both co-owners of the business?
Yes.
Any other family member have an interest?
No.
Okay, so that disclosure has been made. And now I believe we have John Ferris on the line, if you could unmute yourself. This board, the select board typically does not review school contracts. That's the domain of the school committee. So I understand that the school committee had a vote and if you could just review that for us. And in particular, I just want to make sure that I get your view, John, as to whether or not the contract that's at issue is a fair contract to the town and is in the best interests of the Hingham schools.
Thank you, Joe. Yeah, John Ferris, I'm the director of Business and Support Services for the school department. And on Monday, so the history with this need for a van is as we began the school year, we had a number of contractors. All of a sudden, they could not find drivers or their drivers quit on them. And then also, as we started school, we had more and more people who may perhaps had decided they made school at home or not be attending this year, decided they're going to attend. And we do need, and we operate our own fleet for big yellow buses as well as for special education vans. So about a month or two ago, we started searching for, you know, extra vans. Not ones that we could, not one so much for a purchase because we really didn't have capital for them, but perhaps we could do a short-term lease with another municipality. So we heard Cohasset had one, we talked to them, we were called North River Transportation because they have a number of vans and, you know, everybody heard about the driver shortage, so we're trying to get some vans for them. The long and short is from a special education standpoint within our district, we have more students that we need to provide rides to than we have equipment for. So it's unfortunate we have to talk to the parents and say, hey, can you take them? You know, we're obligated legally to give them a ride. So we did a search to try to rent a van or a couple vans from other municipalities and they all failed. There were some good leads at a time and by the time, it's not like we delayed, we just called them up and then all of a sudden, oh, we just got another driver, so we're going to use our van or the special ed director wants to save this because they're going to run. So we could not get another van. So, you know, Patrick Cunningham, who's the manager there, had been searching for equipment and he learned about this equipment from our mechanic, Alme, who also happens to be the mechanic that looks at or does some work for the Fleet First Inc. So through that avenue, we learned about this 2008 GMC minibus that could be used. And Patrick came to me and said, hey, can I get this minibus? Actually, he did that earlier and I said, I tried to do everything I could to avoid anything that may perceive to be a conflict of interest and I just failed everywhere. And but so with this bus, after my last lead dropped, I also sent a message out to my Lighthouse group, which is all the business managers in the South Shore, just to see if any other public school had a piece of equipment that I could rent. Because we do often share with each other, not share our equipment so much, but if they need drivers or rides, we try to help each other out. This year, you know, we heard it, there's no bus drivers, they had the National Guard coming in from other place. We have drivers because Patrick manages the fleet. So, you know, we are very efficient and effective and we do things very cost-effectively. Patrick does a great, any ride that we provide, even if you consider depreciation on equipment, it's less costly than some of the contractors. And especially this year because many of them are gouging. I call it gouging because they, you know, the rates are significantly higher this year than they have been in previous years. So, you know, with that, I did ask Patrick, I said, yeah, if you can get this van, it's a $7,000 van, it's a 20, it's not a van, it's a bus. It's a 20-person GMC 2008. It's $7,000, which I find to be very reasonably priced. Especially, you know, as it's operating, we'll get at least a couple of years out of it. We do maintenance ourselves, our mechanic looked it over. And then Patrick intends to take this piece of equipment and deploy it in a way that we can free up an additional van so that we can take another kid for special education. I have looked at it, I've considered it, I think that, you know, this is an arms-length transaction. There really hasn't been any dialogue between the company and me. I told Patrick, yeah, go ahead and look at it. I believe it to be fair. And just as a way of, another point of note, we just sold a, we had a surplus, 2002 Chevy Sierra and we declared it surplus and we just recently sold it through dovdeals.com. It was not running, it was not operational. So we figured out scrap, we'll get $500 for it. We got $3,200 for it. You know, that money, of course, goes into the general fund. But so the price of this with a nice working van that can get registered, it's in good shape according to our mechanic, we can provide service to our students. In my opinion, this is great for the interest of Hingham and I would hope that the board would see the same and approve this transaction.
But John, this transaction was also presented to the school committee?
Yes, it was on Monday, they took a vote. I have the language of the vote, if you'd like me to read it, or John Coughlin's on board too, he did draft the language for us. They did it and it passed 6-2, nothing. Ness abstained, of course.
Yeah. Okay. You've made it clear that the contract is fair, at least from the town's perspective, and it is in the best interests of Hingham schools. Bill, do you have any questions about this?
Yeah, thank you, John. Thanks a lot. To John Coughlin, a couple of questions to you. So, and I certainly, I've only been on this board a year, but I've been around in town government a while. Why are we voting on this?
This is a special section of Chapter 268A. Because the employee works in the same department that the contract is with, the statute requires a vote of the board of selection. So this does not come up very often, but it's 268A, Section 20D specifically requires the select board to vote. They're the only entity that can approve it.
Okay. An independently elected official is a special municipal employee under the statute?
Yes, the school committee, the school committee's been designated as special municipal employees.
Okay, all right. And just for transparency, John Ferris, can you tell me, how did you and Patrick just land on this specific company?
Actually, he got the lead from our mechanic, Alme. So we have, you know, since we have our bus fleet, we have, you know, 25 buses go there, our vans go there. So we have a great relationship with Alme and I believe that Joe Corenti uses Alme as well. So we learned about the bus, you know, and, you know, I didn't talk to Marion, who is the owner of Alme, but Patrick and him have a good relationship and, you know, he suggested that it's a good running vehicle and, you know, Patrick's was, I mean, he's been looking all over the place for extra vans too. It's really trying for us when we know that there's a child or a student that needs to be transported and, you know, we can't get them there. You know, so we really do everything we possibly can to provide the transportation because otherwise a parent has to get them there. And then we don't like if they have to miss a day of school because the parent can't do it. So we, you know, it's one of those things where it kind of tugs at you a little bit. And it's unfortunate because most times in most years, we have 100%, we can transport all our students. You know, the contractors are available. It's just been very trying times. So I think this piece of equipment will help us out certainly during this period of time as well.
And Bill, if I could add one more thing quickly. The attorney for the Ethics Commission also reviewed the form and the process and I believe that Ness spoke to them directly just to confirm that what she was filing was the proper form and that the vote was the right process. So that was done in addition.
The State Ethics Commission weighed in?
Yeah, the attorney for the Ethics Commission reviewed the form and reviewed the process and confirmed that she's following the right procedures.
Did they issue a written advisory opinion?
No, they did not.
Okay. Phone call. Okay, great. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Liz, any questions?
Well, thank you for being so thorough in this process. Would you mind just reading what the vote language that the school committee used on Monday? Just so we all know that.
I'd be happy to do that. So the vote, it was to approve the purchase of, by the Town of Hingham School Department of a used bus, 2008 GMC 20-passenger bus from Fleet First Inc. in the amount of $7,000, subject to contingent upon a vote of the select board approving the filed disclosure by special municipal employee of a financial interest in the municipal contract as required under MGL 268A, Section 20D.
Great, thank you. No questions.
Do any members of the public, anyone else on this meeting have any comments or questions? Seeing none, just if I can conclude, the statute that we're looking at, which is Chapter 268A, Section 20D, has this board, the select board, as the only board that has the authority to make a determination on the exemption. And as I said at the beginning, we typically do not review school contracts, which is why I had requested that the school committee make the determination on its own as to whether or not it made sense to move forward with this contract. And again, with Ness not participating in that vote, they had their own review and they made the determination that it made sense to move forward with the contract. We're not making that judgment. That really is the school department's domain. And I've asked John here just to make sure that we had all of our questions answered and that all of the, as they say, i's were dotted and t's were crossed. So with that, I'm actually going to propose the motion. It's going to be a little different language than you may have seen. I've looked at the disclosure form and I've reviewed this with our counsel, so let me pull it up. So here's the motion. We have received a disclosure under Mass General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 20D, from a special municipal employee, Ness Corenti, who seeks to have a financial interest, who seeks to have a financial interest in a contract made by a municipal agency of this town. That contract provides for the purchase by the school department of a school bus, 2008 GMC 20-passenger bus, from Fleet First Inc. in the amount of $7,000. We understand that the special municipal employee participates in or has official responsibility for activities of the municipal agency that made the contract. We approve this exemption under Section 20D regarding the financial interest identified by the special municipal employee in the disclosure form attached here too, namely, it's the form that's been presented to us. Is there a second?
Second.
We do a roll co-vote. Bill?
Hi.
Liz?
Hi.
And Joe?
Hi.
It is approved. Thank you, John, and thank you Ness for being here. And good luck with the transaction.
Thanks for having me. Take care.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.
Next item on our agenda is to consider a potential amendment to the ground lease for Lincoln School Apartments and approval of a construction contract with Verica Construction, Inc. regarding the Lincoln School Apartments window replacement project. This is a continuation of the discussion that we had on Tuesday, where we reviewed the construction contract and we asked questions of Art, I believe, questions of Amy, questions of Kathy. So with that, I am going to turn the discussion over to our Assistant Town Administrator, Art Robert.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your flexibility to meet and continue the conversation this evening. I'm joined tonight by Amy Farrell, who's the chair of the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust and together we'll continue the presentation that we started on Tuesday. Can everybody see the slides that we have prepared?
Yes.
Great. I just want to point out, this is the ground we seek to cover, hoping to get to a point where we can address your questions and that you can consider the two motions that we had originally described on Tuesday. I just want to briefly reiterate that this work reflects a lot of input and a lot of energy invested, certainly beyond that invested by Amy and myself, particularly on the town side, Emily Wentworth and Mike Silbera. And certainly, we could not have been successful without the support of John Coughlin and Susan Murphy, you know, in terms of outside counsel. The motions are here, they're the same as we presented on Tuesday and they are tied to different authorities. The first motion, which relates to approving the ground lease amendment, is per the Town Meeting warrant article in 2016. And the second, which relates to approving the contract with, for fixing windows and doors at the Lincoln School Apartments, is by virtue, the town's authorities, by virtue of the lease between the town and Lincoln Apartments LLC. You know, I won't get into a lot of what we had talked about last time, but I just wanted to be sure that folks, just want to hit on a few of the major points. We talked about the site background and history, being built in 1912, the town purchasing the facility in 2008 with the issuance of $7 million in bonds and a town meeting article from 2016 that was intended to help fund capital improvements necessary at the facility that were beyond the ability of the of the financial capacity of the LSA LLC to actually make happen. We also talked, got into great depth about the need for this project, having been first identified in 2010, resources identified in 2016, and here we are in 2021, on the brink of authorizing the work to actually get executed. We talked about how the project will roll forward through the year 2022. We identified sources for funding and the uses for that funding. And critically, we also talked about how the boards that govern the Lincoln School Apartments, have already taken the votes necessary to move forward. More specifically, the Lincoln School Apartments Board of Managers and the Board of the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust. With that as background, and after significant follow-on conversation, we've arrived at a lease amendment that can allow the project to go forward. And that document, which I've shared with you in final draft form, is about three pages long and we did our best to boil it down to a single slide here to summarize what the lease amendment is intended to accomplish. First and foremost, the tenant, which is the Lincoln School Apartments LLC, on execution of this amendment is to pay $522,000 rounded in accrued cash flow rent to the landlord, the town, for prior calendar years, 2014 to 2020. The tenant, again, Lincoln School Apartment LLC, will also transfer $122,000 rounded from their operating account to its replacement reserve account to true it up, to get it up to current standard. The town will transfer $1 million to the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust to be expended solely by the tenant, Lincoln School Apartments LLC, consistent with terms of the amended ground lease on the project as a capital improvement to the site. The project at the site is to be funded first by using available funds from the $1 million Town Meeting appropriation under Article 16 from 2016 and then from available funds from the tenant's replacement reserve account, subject to maintaining any minimum balance as required by law. The tenant then shall only use additional funds from its operating account as necessary to pay for the project after full expenditure of the other resources. The lease amendment spells out repayment terms, repayment terms summarized here. Funds to accrue interest at an annual non-compounding interest rate of 0.09%. That's the interest that is currently being earned by funds on deposit and maintained by the town. Repayment to be paid to the landlord in 10 equal installments between July 1, 2028 and July 1, 2027. The start date, 2028, is tied to when the bonds, payments for the bonds that financed the purchase of Lincoln School Apartments will be paid in full. Then last but not least, the tenant has the option to pay any accrued interest prior to July 1, 2028. And lastly, additional rent under the lease terms, which is the windows project repayment, shall be in addition to any other rent, which under the lease includes base rent due to the landlord under the lease. So that's three pages boiled down to one slide. What we've also worked diligently on with Amy and amongst the town staff is to verify that there's a path forward to repay along the terms specified in that lease amendment. And the summary is here and I would ask Amy, if you're comfortable, to maybe walk us through some of the high points?
Sure. Make sure everyone can hear me. So what you see is a projected cash flow for Lincoln School Apartments, really starting at the end of this year and then carried through until 2037, which would be the final year of the repayment of this million-dollar advance. And just for folks who haven't had the pleasure of being part of the development of this spreadsheet, there are certain base assumptions. The 2021 activity is from the operations information provided to us from Corcoran and the final two months of the year are presented based on budget. 2022 is what the budget is recommended from Corcoran. And then 23 and on, we have made some assumptions for certain key metrics. Gross revenues are inflated by 1% a year. The base rent and additional rent window, that row, is currently are through 2028. That is actually the amount of debt service due on the bonds. And under the terms of the ground lease, that is the base rent. The ground lease also, unless amended, requires that once the base, once those bonds have been repaid, that the base rent, unless there is an amendment to this section, will continue at the amount of the last year of the bond payment. So that 2027 bond payment or base rent of $355,000 is carried over into 2028 and you see the difference between that $355,000 and $455,000 is essentially the repayment or the first annual installment of repayment of the windows, the capital advance from town to the housing trust and the Lincoln School Apartments. Then you go to the next row, which is the operating expenditures and 2021 is year-to-date, 21-plus budget, 22 is a budget and then 23 through 37, expenses are escalated at 2%. The second row, the row below that, is the replacement reserve, the annual replacement reserve that's required to be deposited into that account, a separate account, and the amounts deposited are calculated based on the most recent capital needs assessment, which is what CNA stands for. That is dated as of 2016. As mentioned last Tuesday, there will be a refreshed capital needs assessment. We expect it to in January of next year and it is suspected that those amounts will increase. And so the math works such as that we take the gross revenues less the base rent and starting in 2028, that's base rent plus additional rent to repay the window advance, less operating expenditures, less replacement reserve deposits, which arrives at a number called adjusted total or available cash flow. And that is the number that is used to calculate cash flow rent, which you see below labeled cash flow rent, 90%, and you see that based on these current projections, which are accurate and what we know to be today, as of today, it looks as though there will be cash flow rent distributed to the town. The, you know, the big variable will be what is expected to be included in the capital needs assessment and as a result of that. So this shows the ability for the property to repay the window advance, starting in 2028 over a 10-year period, consistent with the terms of the existing ground lease amended to accomplish the repayment terms. And I guess I'll stop for any questions at this point?
Sure, perhaps, by the way, Amy and Art, thank you, that was exceptional. Could you comment on whether or not what's being proposed is consistent with HUD regulations?
Oh, sure. So HUD wants to make sure, HUD is a subsidizing agency. They provide us with the funds for the Section A contract and what they generally want to make sure is that there are funds available in a replacement reserve, it hasn't been depleted. And sizing of a replacement reserve is done. There's a nice thick hand. There's a nice thick handbook, as any federal agency would have, but they have typically defaulted to the most recent capital needs assessment or a thousand dollars a unit, which is sixty thousand dollars, or whatever the project requires. And to actually remove funds from the replacement reserve, we will require HUD approval, and there's a process to do that, and the asset manager at HUD has been engaged by our property manager, Corcoran, and that's there's a process, and that won't surprise anyone on this call. And that will require submitting a paperwork. They'll review both the contract, the bid, and how that we are proposing to pay for it and make sure they're comfortable that the replacement reserves have not been exhausted as part of this initiative. And because we are depositing or funding the majority of this cost through the advance from the town, we can we can provide that analysis. And so we expect this will be supported. I mean, you know, we are improving a property that is they're subsidizing. We are bringing essentially an owner's advance to do so. So we expect that this will be received positively.
Great. Thank you. Liz, do you have any comments or questions on this?
Joe, if I may, I just want to get to the end here in terms of steps. You actually anticipated an important part of of where we need to, what we need to do to get to the end, which is, you know, what this project is all about, improving life quality at at the LSA. And we're all eager to see this happen by fall of next year. First, the 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 first important step is pending your questions and assuming we get each of you to to a comfort level, is approving the motions that we've provided for consideration. On those approvals, we'll be able to execute the lease amendment and the window and doors replacement contract. We have those, the amendment and the contract signed by the LSA Lincoln Apartments LLC, as well as for the the replacement contract by Verica Construction. We have them in hand on execution of the of the motions. Your signatures will allow us to implement the contract. An important next step that Amy and I have discussed internally is that we need to put together an implementation memo that will that will describe how this will all work operationally. You know, behind the curtain, to be sure that dollars move in the right manner, in the right way, and critically, that it's documented. So all the different parties who had maybe not have worked closely together in the past will all be working from the same rulebook, if you will. And critically, the the how the rent is calculated, the base rent, the additional rent, and the cash flow rent, capturing the formulas so that we have a package ready for people who will be involved down the road. They'll understand the our intent at the high level, you know, through the lease amendment, but they'll understand how to execute at the operational level. HUD approvals are important. We've already touched on that. Amy and I also agree that as this project unfolds, there needs to be close coordination and communication. We've committed to regular contact that would include not just the the trust, but the tenant, who's much more directly involved in the project itself. And certainly, the town will be involved in project management as as rolls forward. With all of that, we'll get to the end, which is what I'm most excited about, you know, which is making a positive impact for people here in Hingham. So with that in mind, we're, Amy and I are open to addressing any questions you may have.
Great. So now, Liz, do you have any questions?
I I did have a question. On the replacement reserve, is it, would it be accurate to assume that those numbers are going to go up once the the new updated capital needs assessment is complete?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Art. Thank you, Amy. I know, I appreciate the due diligence on this. I know this is a very thorough process. So that's my only question. Thank you.
Bill?
Just one quick question. You know, obviously, we're hearing a lot about supply chain backup and the cost of lumber and wood kind of fluctuating, going up and down, and Mark even mentioned this the other night. Are we sure that the the numbers are relatively locked in, or we anticipate a lot of fluctuation in terms of going north of the numbers?
So I believe the numbers are locked in, and that's been part of the pressure to get this in front of folks because the the contractor has signaled that he expects an increase in mid-November in aluminum prices. What what we don't know and won't know until the actual order is placed is what, how long it will take to get the fabrication done. And so right now, we're estimate that the next steps are the wind, that once the contract is signed, they have to go out and take measurements, and then they'll get a deposit, and then they'll place the order, and that's expected sixty days after the windows are measured, roughly. And the first, you know, bump could be when we hear, oh, well, you that might take longer than you thought. So I I think the prices are good, but the time is where we won't know if there's any impact to our schedule until we we place that order.
Great. Well, again, I just want to reiterate my thanks to you, Amy, for your leadership of LSA and Art, great work, and John Coughlin. I know he did a lot of work here too, Susan and Tom. So thanks, everybody.
Any member of the public have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I I have one question, and it is for John Coughlin. And I am hoping, and this is a tough thing for a lawyer to do, but I'm hoping to get a yes or no without having a long explanation. So we are acting pursuant to Article sixteen of the two thousand sixteen Town Meeting, and my question is, are the motions before us consistent with and allowed and authorized by Article sixteen of the two thousand sixteen Town Meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. So with that, I am prepared to accept, actually, there are two motions. So I'm prepared to accept the first motion on this.
All right. I'd think I might, I'd make a motion to approve and execute the amendment to ground lease between the town of Hingham and Lincoln Apartments LLC in the form attached here to.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
And Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Approved. Next item I'd be prepared to accept a motion on.
I will make a motion to approve and execute the contract with Verica Construction Incorporated for the Lincoln School Apartments Window and Door Replacement Project in the form attached here to in accordance with section three point two of the ground lease between the town of Hingham and Lincoln Apartments LLC dated January thirtieth, two thousand nine.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
We are approved, both items. Thank you. I I got to tell you, there's been a lot of work. I I'm only aware of some of it. I've participated in some of it. I'm incredibly impressed with the diligence of those who who really have been involved in this. And I mean, Amy Farrell is is just been incredible, her leadership. Art Robert taking the reins on the town side. So and and obviously, there are more. There's there's John, there's Emily, Wentworth, others, I'm not sure, Art, and you mentioned some before. Who who did I leave out? Because I I just want to make sure that everyone is appropriately acknowledged.
Well, certainly, Mike Silvera on our team
Yes.
has been, you know, pulling the sled and putting all the pieces together to make it easier for us to think. And certainly, Susan Murphy has provided great insight to keep us focused as well.
Terrific. Amy, anyone else you wanted to add?
Um, I think if you want to stop sharing your screen for a second, I I hope she's still on. Kathleen Amanti is the trust treasurer and also a member of the Board of Managers. And so it's helpful to know that there's more than one of us. And you know, I echo everything that Joe says, the the amount of work that's gone on to this. You know, we essentially had to compress thirteen years of work into two weeks. So that's that's the lift that takes place. And you know, as as Arnold says, we'll be back. So thank you very much for your your support, but we'll be looking forward to seeing you again. And I'm really thrilled that we're able to accomplish this and move forward. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next item on our agenda is to consider possible appointments. And I would ask Bill if he has an appointment that he would is prepared to move forward with.
I am. I'd make a motion to appoint Christine Falvey to the naming bylaw committee.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
That is approved, and I note that there is no end date on that appointment because this is a a a special committee that's is not an ongoing committee. Hopefully, their work will be finished, and then the term will end. So we're looking forward to to work from that committee. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is an opportunity for public comment on items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone who has comments they'd like to make? I see none. Any additional town administrator reports?
Not tonight. Thank you, Joe.
Michelle?
No, thank you.
Art, anything further?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Select Board reports. Bill, did you have anything to add this evening?
No, I hope everybody has a good weekend.
Liz?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
And I also have nothing to add. This was this tonight was the culmination of a lot of work. Appreciate everyone sticking in, sticking around and making sure that this happened. I am prepared to accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Oh, sorry.
Second.
It's been seconded. Okay, a roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night, everybody.